Good morning and welcome to the Commission meeting of April 16th. I'll call this meeting to order and we'll note for the record that we have a quorum, but we do have two Commissioners absent today, Commissioner Bender and Commissioner Karski. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone to silence their phone and if they will sign in the back of the room, if they're going to provide any public comment, that would be good. I'd ask you to please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Colonel, I would like to consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? If not, we need a three to zero vote on all votes today to be able to move forward. So if you'd call it.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye, thank you. If there's anyone in the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda? If yes, you'll need to state your name, but we don't look like there is. Are there any requests from the Commission to remove any items on the consent agenda? If not, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye. Motion obviously passed. Now we'll go to the regular business agenda. Again, I'd like to make sure that if anyone wants to speak, they need to sign in. Item number seven is to consider a motion to issue a proclamation recognizing Volunteer Week in Minnehaha County. And that's not Carrie Deaver, is it Jen?
No. Good morning Commissioners. Jen Oticks from Human Resources, I'm standing in for Carrie today. Every year, we take the opportunity to thank the volunteers that generously give their time and hours and efforts and talents here to the county in a number of different departments. And we would like to ask you to consider a motion to issue a proclamation. And today, we have Bill Hoskins, our Museum Director here, who's going to read the proclamation. He has probably the majority of the volunteers that volunteer for him.
Thanks Jen. Welcome Bill.
Good morning. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Sioux Land Heritage Museums. This is a proclamation. Minnehaha County Volunteer Week, April 21 through 27, 2024. Whereas National Volunteer Week is April 21st through the 27th, 2024. And whereas National Volunteer Week is about inspiring, recognizing, and encouraging people to seek out imaginative ways to engage in their communities. And whereas volunteers make a significant contribution to Minnehaha County, in 2023, each month, an average of approximately 244 volunteers contributed to several areas throughout the county, giving thousands of hours of service, enriching the lives of those who have helped, and saving the taxpayers of Minnehaha County tens of thousands of dollars. And whereas the Minnehaha County Commission wishes to thank all of the individuals who have given their time to support county government and to make our community a better place to live, now therefore, the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 21st through 27th, 2024 as Minnehaha County Volunteer Week.
Thank you Bill. Thank you Jen for coming. You have a motion and a second.
I'd move approval of the proclamation.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye. Again, thank you to all the volunteers. It's just an incredible resource for the county and frankly, a lot of valuable experience in those individuals. Item number eight is a public hearing to consider 14 special event on sale liquor license applications for Red Rock Bar and Grill at Houston Speedway for events from May 2024 through September 24. Kim.
Good morning Commissioners. Kim Kershaw is with the Auditor's Office. The Auditor's Office received 14 special event on sale liquor license applications for Red Rock Bar and Grill. The applications are for specific events taking place during May through September at Houston Speedway located in Brandon. The licenses would allow the Red Rock Bar and Grill to sell liquor to be consumed onsite during the 14 events. The applications were provided to the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney, and Planning Department for review. There were no objections or concerns. A license, a special event license is $50 per day and this request is similar to previous years.
Thank you Kim. This is a public hearing, so is there any comments on any of those licenses? Don't see anyone coming forward. Any Commission discussion? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye. Thank you. I forgot to ask if there were opponents, if there's some opponent. We listened to it, but I think we've already moved forward too quick. Item number nine is the Minnehaha County Rural Ambulance Service Annual Presentation from Jason Gierman, who's the Director of Emergency Management.
Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. I'll let the ambulances give the presentation and it'll be representatives from Humboldt and Del Rapids. And if they want to come up and introduce themselves, I'll have a seat.
Good morning, County Commissioner. My name is Ryan Sidik, Director of Del Rapids Ambulance. Thank you for having us present today. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you for the increase in funding that we received here in 2024. Substantial difference for us in Del Rapids. It allowed us to finally increase some reimbursement for our members and our staff and our employees. It's the first time we've increased pay since 2009. So this was a huge win for us in that regard. Del Rapids is sitting again, looking to break records this year with call volume. We're going to be pushing over 600 or close to 600 ambulance calls this year, which we look back to 10 years ago or so. We're running 300, 350, maybe 400. And so we're really increasing that call volume, which I think does highlight the continued need for the service out in the county. We are working with a couple other ambulance services in the area, as well as the South Dakota Healthcare Association to on some grant project through the state of South Dakota to look at regionalizing or streamlining interfacility transfer work in the area, which has, could have a financial benefit for ambulance services as well. So the state grant money that has been put out there, we are trying to tap into some of that and come up with some unique solutions to some of the problems in our area when it comes to ambulance transport. We're also, Del Rapids is going to be working with Stakeholders Group in the state of South Dakota to look at Medicaid reimbursement in the state, as well as hopefully diving into a little bit of the No Surprise Billing Act federally that has been kind of looming over us as well. And so trying to maybe get on the forefront of some of those things. Again, I would, wanted to say thank you again for the increase in funding. We did put a little bit of an increase in for next year as well, and I think we just kind of want to try to keep going forward on that. I know speaking specifically for Dell's, our budget, we're finally able to put a little bit of money away, which is good, because we need to replace a truck at some point. Our oldest truck is 15 years old. Before long, it's going to be 20, and we're going to need to replace that thing. And if we can start to put money away now for it, it's going to be a little easier to afford that when time comes. So again, appreciate everything and I'll let Tim go from Humboldt here.
Thank you. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning Commissioners. Tim Even, Humboldt Fire and Ambulance. Humboldt, I guess, probably no great concept to you. We're a little different this year. Our call volume actually dropped a little bit due to the fact the last couple months of the, of the end of the year, where our calls, our calls were down significantly. We were on pace to keep track where we were in the 330 to 340 calls. This year, we came in at about 290, which is a good thing, I guess. I wish it was less than that, but that's the nature of the beast. With that, I would say this, this past year, even though it was lower call volume, I think we probably ran across some of the more devastating calls that we have ever been on, at least in my time, which I started when I didn't have gray hair, I've said before. So it's been a number of years, but, so not only do we have to work or worry about, you know, all of our people's personal safety when we're on scenes, but we also got to start thinking about, you know, mentally what's going on with them. We do have what we call a peer support group that gets together after these devastating calls. With the help of, this past year, we were using some of the volunteers out of Sioux Falls Fire Rescue. They came out, you get together and, you know, probably within about 48 hours after the incident and talk things over. It's a, it's a good way to let everybody know that it's okay to talk about stuff. So with that, with the increase in funding that you folks gave us, we were also able to increase some pay for some of these folks that are down in the trenches, I guess, doing the nasty stuff that we have to do out there. So it was greatly appreciated by all the medics that were able to get a bump in pay. So thank you very much for that. As stated at the County Fire Chiefs, when we were here a few weeks ago, we are also part of this new metro kind of working group that gets together once a month. I sit on that as well for not only fire, but EMS to discuss things at Metro Communications, if there's something that needs to be discussed or any issues that need to be addressed. And also, as mentioned, we're part of the Chiefs Association now, so once a month, we get together with County Fire Chiefs. So it's a reason for the ambulance folks to, again, talk over stuff with fire and EMS together, because we work on all the calls together anyway. So it's kind of a, it made sense. After it finally happened, we said, why didn't this happen years ago? Again, mentioned at the, with the County Fire Chiefs, we will have a countywide training coming up on May 7th out in the area of Ellis. And Humboldt Ambulance will be taking part in that. They don't want to deplete the county of all its EMS resources, so they, they picked one to say, hey, we're going to have you guys come in and we'll obviously utilize mutual aid if there's anything that goes on in our territory during that time, which is a great benefit to everybody. But yeah, like I said, thanks for your continued support. It's not just the county that we look to, it's also the townships and municipalities, as well as fundraising and stuff of that nature, which we just completed again this weekend. So good thing I'm my own boss, otherwise I think I'd be fired for going to too many meetings. But with that, I will open it up if you folks have any questions for us.
Thank you gentlemen. Do you have any questions for either one of the department heads? Mr. Chair, Mr. Kipley?
I guess, I can just state, I've been the liaison to the rural Fire Chiefs and EMS. I've appreciated the opportunity to learn a lot of their meetings, looking forward to the May 7th exercise. Can you just speak a little bit further, Tim or Ryan or both, on just what recruitment and retention looks like for the staff that goes into the rural EMS? I know it sounds like maybe this pay raise over the last year might have helped a little bit around the edges, but what are we looking at these next couple of years and what's your pipeline for future EMS workers?
Well, yeah, that's, that's correct. It's tough to get somebody to, for kind of the pay we were offering for what we're being asked of these people to, you know, come out to help out a rural service. So yeah, recruitment can be a little tough. This will help significantly. I mean, in order to get people to, you know, at least look at us to say, hey, you know, for what you're offering, yes, I can come, I'll come on, take some shifts. It helps out in, you know, the staffing, so it's not the same group, you know, that's running an extreme number of calls or shifts, maybe I should say, which, you know, then starts running into overtime and things of that nature. And it also, I guess, it builds the whole, the whole service up. Right now, we have one person that just completed an EMT course, one that is taking the EMT course, and you know, that's a gee thanks, is all you get out of that. And we do have one individual looking at taking the paramedic course. So yeah, the fact that we were able to increase some, some pay, that's, that's very beneficial. So, but we're always looking, so.
And Ryan?
I'll throw two cents in with Dell's too, maybe just a little bit here. I think, you know, historically, when you look at pay in emergency medical services, it was, it was poor. Let's be honest, it was, it did not pay well. And now that the area full-time services are paying better, it forces us to pay better too, which is good all around. And so if we want to continue to draw part-time people in from the flight programs or from, from other full-time services in the area, we're going to have to make it worth their while to come up. And so I think that's a beneficial way to do it, because then we get people that are very experienced. And that's one thing I'm very proud of in our area, and I know yours as well, that we got some of the best staff around. And I'd put our, our staff up against anybody right now to say that you're going to get the best care you can in our areas. And so we can continue with that. And again, it just comes back to, and not everything is about money, but it sure helps. So we try to do other things as well to make our departments, you know, marketable to people to come up and help. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks Ryan.
Thanks.
I would just say that the county gets reports on a regular basis about the professionalism, if you will, on the calls that you make and the practices that you practice. And you guys have done an incredible job for a long time. I don't think we've ever seen anything significant that you had an issue with, and you should be proud of the people you have employed and some that are volunteers. If you don't mind me asking, just do you have an estimate on what some of that equipment cost might be in the future? I know that's a hard number to come up with.
Yeah, right now, like with, with an ambulance, we're looking at $300,000 in that range. I mean, that's now, so who knows what that's going to be in two or three years from now? Maybe it can go the other way too, but doubt it. The nice thing is, you know, there's a lot of money out there, grant money for equipment right now, not for vehicles, but for some of the other hard, hard equipment in an ambulance, like cardiac monitors and stretchers and stuff like that. And so we've been fortunate to be able to snag a lot of that money and, and replace equipment. The thing you can't get grants for though are vehicles and staff. And so those are the things that we need to plan for.
Yeah, Ryan has that exactly right. We are constantly looking for grant money. And he's right, the equipment, yeah, you can go hunting and you can look under rocks, you'll, you'll find something and that'll help out there. But yeah, like I said, the, the stuff that doesn't get paid for off of grant is vehicles and staff.
Thank you gentlemen. Any other questions? I forgot again to ask for public comment. Does anyone have any public comment? Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Item number 10 is to authorize the Chair to sign an agreement between the county and the Helpline Center for Just Home Project Services. Mr. Johnson?
Good morning Commissioners. Brett Johnson from Human Services. As you remember, I was here three weeks ago and actually brought forth the modified agreement with MacArthur Foundation Urban Institute, as well as some of the, the agreements with sub-grantees. And this one that I'm asking a signature for is actually one that was inadvertently missed when it was uploaded to your agenda. So I'm here to just request your signature for the, the service agreement with the Helpline Center to help us track the, the data that we'll be doing with Just Home.
Thank you. Any questions for Brett?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any public input at this point? I remembered. Hard to get good help Brett. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
All right, thank you Commissioners.
Item number 11 is to authorize the Chair to sign a professional service agreement with HDR Engineering for 60% design for the project MC 18-08 Maple Park St. Street Reconstruction. Mr. Groan, Highway Superintendent.
Good morning, Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. If you recall, back on March 19th, the Commission approved a joint powers agreement between Minnehaha County, Cities of Sioux Falls, and Brandon and Split Rock Township to finance a design contract for the future rebuilding of the Maple Park Street Corridor. Today, we're just asking your approval to sign the contract with HDR so we can get going on the process.
Thank you Steve. Any public comment or questions? If not, is there any Commission questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the approval of this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is also a highway item. Authorize the Chair to sign a professional service agreement with IMEG Corp. for preliminary engineering for project MC 24-05 Structure 50-149-140 Bridge Replacement.
Once again, Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. During our recent bridge inspections, our bridge engineer at Civil Design Inc. has flagged this structure as possibly a candidate to be load posted in the next coming years. It's a double, it's called a double T structure, which we've had some issues with. If you recall, two years ago, we had a bridge posted just west of the new Tri Valley School. That was also a double T. They have a history of deteriorating rapidly. We're asking for your permission today to get into a design agreement with IMEG to get this bridge designed for possible future replacement. IMEG has the capacity to complete this work this year, so we can apply for state big funding at the first of the year to hopefully get some state funding to help pay for the replacement of this structure.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission?
If I could ask a question?
Absolutely.
I'm just wondering if we have an idea of how many other structures like this we have in the county and are there more coming up in the next year or two, or are they farther out in your five-year plan?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blyenberg, we keep very close track of our double T structures as we do for all of our bridges. We are aware of one other bridge in the northeast corner, but it's not as far along. But we are going to apply for state funding to do some preliminary engineering on that structure on Highway 114 east of Baltic, so we could hopefully get that going in the next few years too. But we actually have a 10-year plan on our bridges, just tracking conditions, just to make sure we don't get, have any surprises.
Any other questions? I just have one. Do you do traffic counts on those and keep those on a annual basis?
Yes, we do. We do traffic counts on all our structures every year.
Thank you. We have a motion? Not yet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Now, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Item 13 is to consider bid results and award a recommendation for the annual materials letting and authorizing the Chair to sign four of the five vendor agreements. Bids open March 27th. Steve?
Once again, Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. We, as you mentioned, we open bids for annual materials. We're very happy with the results this year. Our pricing actually went down on both asphalt and on salt. Once again, this year, we did not receive any salt sand bids, but we are able to make that in-house. Looking for your approval to enter into these four awards.
Any questions for Steve? If I remember right, I think the city had the same issue with one of the vendor opportunities, I guess?
Yep.
So is there a solution to that with not a vendor?
We, everybody has the capability to make it themselves. It's easier to buy when you have it pre-mixed on the salt sand, but until someone around here finds the, finds that it's economically advantaged to make their own, it's probably going to be the story for a while.
Okay. Thank you. Any public comment? We need a motion to approve or deny?
I'll, I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. Roll call vote.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye. Motion unanimously passes. Item 14 is to authorize the Chair to sign a professional services agreement between the county and Geotech Engineering to provide inspection and material testing services for the Juvenile Justice Center project at an estimated cost of $94,500. Mr. Greco?
All right, good morning. Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. This particular professional services agreement is, as the Chair noted, with Geotech Engineering Services, and it's essentially quality assurance and, and control for what amounts to earthwork, concrete, rebar, and steel work that occurs throughout the Juvenile Justice Center project duration. So what this particular agreement does is it authorizes them to provide those services up to an amount of $94,500. The cost range is in there, so it could range from 82,750 up to that amount. However, if it does go above the 94,500, we'd come back to you for additional approval. This would begin as soon as they begin the earthwork, which should begin this week, assuming that it gets signed. And so I would encourage your support and approval of this particular agreement.
Thank you. Any public comment about the presentation or Commission discussion? If not, is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
I'm glad that you two guys get along really well this morning, otherwise we'd be in trouble. Thank you for that. We have a motion and approval, and we need a roll call vote.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye. Thanks Tom.
You're welcome.
Item number 15 is Commission Office Annual Presentation.
All right, good morning. Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer again. I thought I'd come before you, like the other departments, just to provide a brief annual update as we head into the budget season. So I'll kind of kick off just with our staff organization, obviously not anything new to all of you. We work for, obviously, the County Commission, the five of you elected officials. The office is led by myself and there are three other individuals in the office, the Assistant Commission Administrative Officer, which is currently vacant, but I am happy to say that we have made a hire. She'll come on board April 29th, so additional information will follow on that. Commission Assistant, that's Melinda Storey, she does a wonderful job. You see her up, up here sometimes briefing as well. Invaluable asset to the, to the office. And then, of course, our videographer, Joel Brown, who keeps us public, provides transparency for the county and ensures that our meetings are professionally recorded each Tuesday. So a great team that we have, but overall on the right, we have essentially what the office does. Again, not much new news to you, but we directly support the five elected Commissioners that sit up here and serve the people of Minnehaha County. So our jobs primarily revolve around implementing your programs, policies, and procedures, collaborating with other departments, agencies, and organizations to ensure successful county operations, and also advising you and others on matters requiring your consideration, usually here at a public meeting. So just an annual snapshot, I kind of took those four major areas that we work on, support to the Commission, down through advising on matters, and just, I'm trying to provide a snapshot of what we do in a typical year. This is by no means all-inclusive and by no means limited only to our office. With each one of the things we do, we rely obviously on a wide range of other departments and folks who help us accomplish our mission to include the civil, the State's Attorney's Office, you know, certainly the Auditor's Office when it comes to budget and finance matters, and also work right here in the Commission Room. So in terms of support to the Commission, I'll just highlight a few things. So last year, and this year will be similar, we supported 58 official meetings with over 1,000 agenda items. Just remember, some of those are on the consent agenda, so you don't individually approve each one of them. But there's a high volume of work that's going through the Commission. Melinda typically puts those agendas together. Kim, obviously, sitting up there with the Auditor's Office as the Commission Recorders. Our job is to make sure that we have a, provide you with the information you need each meeting. We also kind of manage 60 various Commissioner Liaison assignments. Now, you all obviously directly deal with that yourselves. A lot of folks may not know that in addition to sitting up here each Tuesday, you're also managing certain departments, a handful of outside agencies that we provide funding to. to, and also several commissioners, all of the commissioners sit on one board, one or more boards throughout the community. So our job is to try and at least maintain some visibility on those things, maintain relationships with those organizations, and certainly give you the information that you need to be successful. Also, just mentioning here, fifty scheduled invites and events this past year. Again, this is something that Melinda takes care of. You know, there's a lot of folks do want to hear what county commissioners have to say. So we do, you know, obviously enjoy passing those on to you, or you get those directly. One of the things that we do is just ensure that we're meeting state open meetings laws. If there is going to be a quorum of you, we do either provide an agenda or we provide notice of a quorum. Then finally, on support to commission, just budget planning and preparation in general. So you see that occurring right now, certainly. The auditor's office plays a very significant role in that. You've seen Susan up here for several weeks over the past month, providing information about how we landed back in 2023, what our carryover status is for twenty-four, and she also gave you a nice budget outlook for 2025. So again, we'll be looking at starting those budget meetings in June. Implementing policies, programs, and procedures, again, just a snapshot, last year, the renovation of this particular building was closed out. You have this great commission chambers right now, but also a lot of improvements to the building in general, and really, that closed out a lot of work done by the county over the last couple of years to renovate not only this building, but also the equalization building. The other major, major item that, that sort of go, that basically goes through our office is the Juvenile Justice Center design and now construction. So that's a fifty million dollar project authorized by the county commission, and certainly, our office is the point of contact for our, for our owner's representative and also our, our other partners who are involved in the project. But certainly, this is a huge county team effort, and there's significant work that's being done, you know, certainly by the state's attorney's office, by the JDC itself, and by facilities, by the sheriff's office, a lot of input from various departments. So so far, it's been a very successful process. As I mentioned before, they will start turning dirt soon, if they haven't already. So we look forward to a great construction project. One other item, Safety and Justice Challenge Grant Funding. So through our office passes the grant funding, four hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars over the past, well, this year and last year. You know, so that's a major lift. We do have service agreements in place to execute the Safety and Justice Challenge, but as we've discussed in the past, in the past, that grant funding will likely come to an end in the near future, so we'll be looking at options and ways to manage those programs. And then the last thing just wanted to mention, so we have an approximately, we'll say, just approximately a million dollar budget within the commission office that covers salaries and a wide range of other activities, but ultimately, through our office and going into other funds or other, other objects and organizations within our finance system, we've processed in 2023, and again, this is something that Melinda does, three hundred fifty office invoices, invoices came through the office totaling about five point one million dollars. So we touched quite a few programs that occur throughout the county and obviously, you know, do our best to keep you informed about it, but also to make sure that we're being good stewards of the funding that's coming through. And then the last two items on here, just collaborating with others, played an active role in a summer study this past summer on county funding and services. We've talked about that here in the past, found some success, certainly not one hundred percent attributable to Minnehaha County and their input, but we did provide significant input along with other counties, so we're proud to be, have been a part of that. Also want to point out that over the past year, we've, we've managed a little over forty-five different contracts and agreements in the office. Some of them we've let expire. Some of them are brand-new contracts and agreements, but that's a large volume considering the size of our office, and I think we do a pretty good job with it. And then also, just keeping track of and maintaining visibility on twenty-four separate internal and external boards. Those are everything ranging from the planning commission, which, you know, obviously, we have a great department that keeps tabs on that, but just in terms of visibility for the county commission itself, all the way to things like the abandoned cemetery board and other kind of lesser-known boards that are out there, but important nonetheless. And then finally, in that area, just maintaining a focus on the juvenile justice collaborative, but also the Safety and Justice Challenge, just those programs in general, our office is very closely involved with both those, and those involve really pulling a wide range of stakeholders from the community together to address some of the major issues that are out there. And then last, just advising on matters for, for commission considerations. So we do do our best, you know, certainly, to keep an eye on ordinance and policy revision, ordinance and policy reviews and revisions, track legislative sessions, but also take an active role throughout the entire year in terms of ramping up for the next legislative session. Also, this past year, one of the primary things that we looked at was property and liability insurance, obviously not super exciting things, but things that do cost the county money, so we want to make sure that we're getting the best value and managing risk appropriately. And then, of course, over the past year, my particular position transitioned. I had the privilege of following Carol Mueller, hopefully, and stepping into those shoes well. And then I mentioned before, that we'll be bringing on a new Assistant Commission Administrative Officer. So I'll just kind of wrap up here with an outlook for 2025. One of the items that you'll see in our proposed budget for the office is a campus master planning effort. I'm looking at right now about a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars for that. We'll kind of narrow it down within the next few weeks, you know. So in the past, there, there have really been some smart and significant investment by the county commission in our facilities, but throughout that entire process, there's, there's kind of always been an identified need for long-term planning as we grow in size and, and our capacity needs increase. So look out for that on the horizon. I mentioned the Juvenile Justice Center construction project. We will try and get a update as we get a little further along to the commission and the public for that matter, just to give an idea of where we're at maybe later on this summer. An exciting project, as we mentioned earlier, the project budget is fifty million dollars. It's already kicked off, and we should see the first phase ending in the summer or the fall of 2025. And then just budgeting for change is kind of how I dub that. We are moving into the budget season, so just kind of highlighting the fact that we will begin those budget meetings and the consideration of budget basically throughout the summer timeframe, ending ideally with adoption of a budget by the end of September. But also, just, you know, one thing we try to make sure that you're kept abreast of and the, the public for that matter, is the fact that our ARPA funding will, requires obligation by the end of this year. So that's been a large topic of discussion for that. I think we've done a great job in managing that over the years, and I think we'll be in a good position next year and in future years, and also just constantly looking at our grant funding cycles. So some certain grants will end, ARPA is one example, but other grants out there, looking how we transition and how we plan for the future and sustain certain programs as we move forward. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions, if you have any. Otherwise, that is all I have.
Any questions for Tom? Mr. Kipling?
Looking ahead to, to budget, I'm trying to remember, maybe it's PTSD that I blocked it out last year, but how, how many days did we allot for that, or what were, what was the time?
There are three scheduled budget days, so the tenth, which is a Monday, it would follow the canvas of votes, which is going to be a special meeting that morning on June tenth, and then the next one would be the eighteenth, and then the twenty-fifth, if those two are Tuesdays.
Any other questions? Any public comment? I would make a comment about the quality of support that we get is unbelievable. They support not only the commission, but we also get a lot of wonderful support from department heads, from obviously, from Kim and from Eric and Joel here in the front, but more importantly, their preparation and giving us all the information that we need to come into these conversations is exceptional, I believe. So thank you for your leadership, and thank you for the transition that you've gone through and made everything very smooth and very comfortable. So we appreciate the department heads and the staff, because we get a lot of wonderful support. Got a significant group of people behind what we have as a leadership function, so if there aren't any other questions or comments, we don't need a motion, obviously. We'll go to the opportunity for public comment. Make sure that you've signed in if you haven't, and the sign in is obviously right in the corner over here. Mr. Cunningham, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm John Cunningham from Sioux Falls. I've been meaning to come here for several months with travel and in the interim, I wasn't able to do this, but the, just an issue came up several months ago about elections, that the auditor at that time was complaining that wasn't getting sufficient assistance and support from the, from the vendor and from the state to solve a problem that doesn't exist. There's never been any fraud in this, in the election in Minnehaha County. I can't imagine it ever will be, but, but this kind of, of mess is a, is a symptom of a bigger problem and one that, that I sympathize with you with, because a hundred and thirty-five years ago, our forefathers created a system of county government that's not supposed to work, actually. In order to, in fairness, in order to avoid nepotism, they, where your wife could be the auditor and your son the sheriff and, and your daughter the treasurer, they decided to make them all elected, which means that you are the high-level people that everybody believes should be accountable for everything that happens or doesn't happen in Minnehaha County, but you don't have authority to run most of the county. That is, the lines of authority and responsibility and accountability aren't parallel here. And now, the good news is that, except for a little friction here and there, that's off, always worked out pretty well. They've made it work out pretty well. But this election thing is getting a mess, and, and the problem is that the stuff that hits the fan won't all land on the auditor. Some of it, because you're the people who are the, the high-level officials, some of it's going to stick to you, and I, and I feel bad about that. The other thing is the issue of, of paper ballots all over the state. People are asking you to do paper ballots. Not the worst idea to ever come, well, maybe it is, the worst idea to ever come before you. Paper ballots are a, a major opportunity for fraud. The, and not just intentional fraud mistakes, a, a person has to make a judgment about whether a mismarked, somebody partially filled in a bubble, has to make a judgment about whether that vote should be counted or not. Gives a tremendous amount of power to the counter. Another problem is that you might be a very generous person, look at these, yeah, and you're a hard-nosed, and when you, you come up with a count, but when you recount them, and they should all be counted twice, like accountants do, you'll not come up with the same number. And, and then even then, in, in a trip county, small county tried this. They, they foolishly agreed to do that, but after several days of counting just a small number of ballots, they couldn't come up with the same answer and had to have a machine fix it. The, but, and all of this is because there's a mistrust of, of machines for no reason at all. I'm probably the only person you know who's ever managed a precinct for four different elections using electronic voting machines. They're fast, accurate, and completely reliable, and I've no, no idea why people would believe the, the stories of fraud that, that are going around. So the, the paper ballots do have that opportunity for fraud, and it's happened. The last time we had a fraudulent presidential election was probably nineteen sixty. There's ample evidence that Cook County fraudulently adjusted the count of their paper ballots to hold, to, to cause the state of Illinois to go for John Kennedy, which tipped the election toward him. Richard Nixon knew that, and he thought seriously about challenging the, the results of that election in court and probably would have won, but he put America first. He knew what it would do to the country. He saw what, what would happen, and he couldn't stomach the, the consequences, and he put America first and swallowed the election. And now we've seen the consequences in America when a candidate doesn't put America first. And so I think if you had had the opportunity, you'd have probably just fixed the problem if you had the authority, but, but you don't, okay?
John, I think we've run out of time.
Okay, I'll just, five seconds?
Sure.
I think that the County Commission Association should consider pressing for a change to the constitution that allows you to appoint the officials that you're, that do the job that you're responsible for. I think that's what you need to happen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Public opportunity?
Bob Colby, city of Sioux Falls. I'm kind of like a boomerang every once in a while. I show up when you aren't expecting it, but one of the things that I would congratulate after the fact is that the county commission, after watching the state and other states after being out in Arizona for a while, Arizona legislature and the South Dakota legislature together make Utah looks really nice and conservative and all that sort of thing, but that's another story. But I think that the county doesn't take enough time patting itself on the back, saying, "We budget." The city, as Chair Bennigan will know, the mayor puts together a budget, but really doesn't, because the minion for the mayor does that for them. The state, the governor puts together a budget, but the minions for the governor put it together, and both the, the state and the city approve a budget, but they do not construct a budget. So if you construct a budget, you know where things are going. If you okay a budget, you only pay attention to the items that you are interested in. And so that's why I think that the county should be saying more to the rest of the elected officials, "We do the work, you just do the rubber stamp." Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from anyone? If not, we'll go to commission liaison reports. Does anyone have one? Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you. Let's see, it was two weeks ago now, I think, we had the Association of Towns and Townships, the Minnehaha County group got together out at the highway department, had a very good turnout. We're going to outgrow that space very quickly, but I just wanted to mention that it was a good meeting with lots of attendance and a big thank you to all those township officials and the work that they do.
Thank you. Mr. Kipling?
I guess I can just mention as a carryover from some building committee meetings, I did have the opportunity to meet with Judge Howman and just going over at the courthouse the elements of some expansion with their new, the judicial vacancies or new judicial positions coming open this summer, and just kind of walked through some of the timeline and vision for those projects, but she seemed satisfied with our approach thus far, and we'll just have to watch our progress over the summer in the courthouse. That seems to be an ever-growing, evolving situation, and, and also, obviously, she's the presiding judge of the Second Circuit, so not just Minnehaha County, but keeping coordination with what's going on in Lincoln County as well. But other than that, I don't think I have any other reports, so thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Bender and I met briefly with the Juvenile Justice, I'd say, support group, and we'll have some reports on that in the immediate future, and so far, all the news has been very positive, so we'll get more information to you soon. Any non-action commission discussion items? There is no executive session, so I'd look for a motion to...
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.